Encouraging text from my wife said, "Good luck." So, all right. Les, I'm gonna have you go ahead and start us out with a prayer.
Thank you, Michael. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this day, for this opportunity that you've given us to serve this community. But we ask your blessings to be upon those that are in need, those that are suffering, or those that just need to hear your hope. Or we thank you for the, just the many folks that are serving this community and providing care for those that need it. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Les. I appreciate both today and all of the town halls that you've, you know, allowed us kind of the appropriate kind of way to start some of these meetings and focus. I do want to, as people continue to join us, and I know it is a spring break week and we have a fair number of agents out, but the good thing about these meetings is we can record them and we're going to be sending them out. But John G.'s background, Michael Sally said, "What is John G.'s background?" That was actually yesterday's launch class. And Barbara is working them incredibly hard. No, I think that was, I think that was John's Army Rugby, Rugby Team. But that's all right. I do want to start off with a bit of a sad news. Unfortunately, we did get noticed this morning, for those who know that Wayne Poplin, that Wayne Poplin died this morning. And Wayne has been a big part of the industry. Certainly our local market and our company, even before the Caldwell Banker merger, for nearly the last forty-plus years. And Wayne had had some recent health complications. We just got word of that this morning, so I would ask everyone to, you know, obviously, you guys also know Debbie, Wayne's wife, for many of you, just to give them some time and some space and, and we will communicate if there are any, any services, either virtual or in person, as well as, you know, home addresses and anything, so you can send your well wishes. We don't want to overwhelm them with, you know, too much this morning, but I did want to share that with everybody as, as we just heard that news this morning and, you know, he was a big part of the company and, and, you know, again, of the lives of many of you guys. He, he taught many of you guys, you know, what it took for you guys to get your license in the beginning. I think at one point, Salt Point was the most measured building in the, in the country because of Wayne's classes where all the agents would have to go measure Salt Point as they learned how to measure a building. So it was important that we go ahead and, and say something in, in respect for Wayne and, and wanted to do that after Les' prayer. Right now, if you want to put gratitude, obviously, I'll, I'll transition for my condolences to Debbie and our thoughts on Wayne also as to gratitude for both Wayne and Debbie and everything they brought to the company and everything Wayne brought to all those students that he taught. You know, John Brewer, prior to and straight into real estate, has always been an educator. And, you know, that was something I know that's so important to those who are just educators of heart like Wayne and John and Barbara and everybody, the impression they leave on so many that they'll never really even know. So if you want to put your gratitudes in the chat box, we'd love to see them. Too many people forced every, mute, unmute everybody and have a hundred and fifty-some odd people talking at once, but that's okay. Obviously, we just finished Easter. Had such great weather and such a wonderful symbol of what Easter represents, which is, you know, moving from maybe darker and drearier times, both weather-wise, COVID-wise, emotional or spiritual-wise, into a season of brightness and birth and growth and symbolizing so many. Michael Sally, you know, grateful for his parents still being able to do life with them, which is great. People thankful for their health, thankful for Wayne's life and the core family, you know. Thankful that everyone, not everyone, but a lot of people are getting vaccines and are getting through that process. I did get my Johnson and Johnson shots, so that's behind me. Not too bad, just had a little soreness on day two, so I was glad to have that behind me. I have had some questions that talk about some of our restrictions or guidelines that we have COVID-related of sign-in sheets and temperature checks and masks in common areas. And our plan as a company and as it was when we put that into place last summer is to make sure that we're doing all that we can to not only protect ourselves but protect one another. And so I would encourage everyone, as you have the opportunity to get a vaccine, to do so, I'm not a medical expert, so I understand that's a decision everyone will make for themselves. But I think when we have the opportunity to present ourselves, protect ourselves, we should. And as those are widely available, walk-in kind of drugstore kind of situations, I do see some relaxing, obviously, of our sign-in sheets and, and temperature checks and other things because while we still want to make sure we're protecting ourselves and others, the good news is if we can, you know, have anywhere from eighty to ninety-plus percent effectiveness and even if someone does get it, a much lower seriousness level, that, that will help. And then we can have some returns to normalcy, although I think we'll always take certain lessons from this. And so, you know, it's like everything in life. We will learn and grow and incorporate the best of while hoping to return to another level of normalcy, certainly not, you know, just going back to everything is normal. I also wanted to announce some award winners. You know, we've been covering awards kind of through the last, through the first quarter. And we did some agent awards. We did some lifetime achievement and twenty-year society awards at the virtual town hall. And we'll communicate all of these company-wide as well. But I also wanted to announce some mortgage award winners. They were such a key, critical component of the success that our clients had in navigating a lot of the issues that went on last year, especially during those periods of uncertainty. And we wanted to make sure that we recognize them in both units and volume as well as offices. So I'm gonna start with office, some office awards, and these are the offices that had the highest success percentage use of Carolina One Mortgage. And you know, while numbers are great, I've never said as a company that we're good because we're big. I'd like to flip it around and say we're big or we represent and serve a lot of clients because we're good. And so I think these numbers speak to the quality of the service and focus on the customer that the loan officers and teams in these offices provide. But our runner-up office, representing nearly four in every ten buyers in that office was the Trolley Road office and the team out of Trolley Road doing such a great job serving so many clients. That was really, really impressive, only to be beat out by two small percentage points, which I know probably gets under Brenda's skin. Brenda would probably lose by, Brenda would rather lose by like thirty than just lose by just two percentage points. But it was a tight battle and I don't know if he's the same in your screen, Brenda, but the upper right corner of my screen and upper right corner of my heart, the winner in that is Tim Walter from Mount Pleasant North. So congratulations to Mount Pleasant North for just edging out Trolley Road. When we look at closed volume and closed units, we actually had, so these are for loan officer awards. We actually had the same in both categories, the same runner-up and the same winner. And in closed units and closed volume up category, we had the Metro North Loan Officer Team of Dean Chui and Ellen Knight. And Dean and Ellen closed forty-eight million dollars in volume for two hundred and seventeen units out of the Metro North office. And congratulations to the Metro North office, to Dean and Ellen. Dean has actually moved over to the Kane Bay Nextin office, where as that office grows, he's continuing the, the legacy and culture on the mortgage side that he delivered to Met, to Metro North office and has continued that over at Kane Bay now with Chip. And we appreciate what Dean's done to help the agents and grow our mortgage presence in Kane Bay as Chip and the agents grow the office up there and in the market and that office has done so well. So we're super excited for that. And Ellen, now having a new team at Metro North, continuing to hold that down. So it's, it's a legacy both to the brokers and the loan officers there and congratulations, Tim says Dean the Machine. So there you go. It's probably a hat he should have. And the winner in the mortgage category for both volume and units is the Mount Pleasant North team. And congratulations to Tim. Congratulations to Linda Roda Bush and Elizabeth Curry for everything that they've done in Mount Pleasant North. And again, the culture of service and focus that they've been able to build there. So congratulations to all of our mortgage winners. And that certainly fits within a category of gratitude. The, the last gratitude I'll, I'll share and then I'll talk just briefly about the market and then we'll get to our special guest, which is really whom you all want to hear from, not me. You know, the last gratitude that I'll share is in the same spirit of Wayne Poplin, a gratitude to our leadership team on all levels for their caring and focus in all of themselves that they put into our agents as our agents, you guys, do all the heavy lifting to build your careers. We just had a manager call this morning and, you know, we talked about two different agents in two different markets in two different offices. One of whom is on vacation for the first time in a couple of years after setting a goal a year ago and passing through it and now moving it higher. It wasn't easy. The agent was doing lots and lots of hard work while, you know, raising some kids and working nights and weekends at a restaurant to, you know, keep the bills paid as she built a career and now has achieved her, her short-term goal and is increasing her long-term ones as she takes a well-needed vacation. You know, the other, the broker talked about somebody who, you know, may not have seen a real estate career as something that they were going to be able to achieve and be able to succeed and maybe had jobs before but not a career. And just last week had, you know, fifty thousand plus in commission income closed in a single week. And, you know, achievements that are hard-earned. This is not an easy business. But it is one that if you put in the time and energy and focus and have somebody that, that, you know, as I hope you all know, we do, has your back and will do anything we can to help you succeed. But again, you've got to do that heavy lifting, that we see those stories and we see the, the effort and energy that you guys put in and, and just makes us so, so proud to partner with and to be in the business with you guys. So I thought it was appropriate, obviously, to congratulate each of you guys on the hard work that you guys put into all of your clients on a daily basis. And we appreciate being partners with you. Shifting a little bit briefly to the market itself. You know, what can we say? Inventory is, still remains critically low and that's not going anywhere anytime soon. We've talked to our new homes team and new homes builders are still, lack of better term, rationing new home sales. They've sold so many homes that are being built in the future. They're also left with uncertain build costs and labor costs that it doesn't make sense to sell so many too far out that they're rationing those sales on a monthly basis. So new construction certainly is not going to build our way out of the inventory shortage. We had nearly a million jobs created last month. If you saw the jobs report last Friday. Now, that's an incredible jobs number. However, we need another nine to ten months of a million jobs created per month to get back to the jobs we had before the pandemic. So while that's an incredible number, there's still a long way to go, but demand's going to remain strong as we're adding nearly a million jobs per month. It's not like we're losing a million jobs per month and there's going to be a wave of foreclosures around the corner. The economy is getting better. And with government forbearance and other programs and relief assistance and other things, there's not any short-term wave of anything that's going to, you know, rebuild that inventory supply. So we're going to be faced in a low inventory world for a while. Last week had four hundred and sixty-six properties go under contract. Remember from Dave's stats, and you should be getting these and understanding these on a weekly basis because it allows you to communicate with your clients and be the expert in the industry. Or remember Dave's stats that he put out, can't see it on the screen though, I guess from my background. But before the pandemic, four hundred and fifty-eight was the busiest week ever in our market. So regardless of what it was the last week or the week before, the year before, four sixty-six still would represent the busiest week ever that our market seemed pre-pandemic. So demand remains really, really high as inventories continue to drop. You know, as of last week, we had fourteen hundred and fifty-nine active listings. So we've settled between, you know, we had for a while in that sixteen to seventeen hundred range. We've now dropped under fifteen hundred with demand still remaining super high. So I, you know, I think there are more Starbucks in town now than there are active listings. So, you know, you need to make sure that you're staying on top of things, that you're up on the opportunities and unique things that you have inside the market with Instalist and Facebook page and being engaged in your office because that is really going to allow you to move forward. You know, there are lots of agents getting in the market and that's okay. There are always going to be lots of agents getting in the market. And ironically, someone the other day said in front of few agents, which was a mistake, that with things flying off the shelves, real estate's really easy right now. And the agents around them laughed, just like many of you just did for the ones that I can see. Because the truth is while agents are getting in the market and while things are selling quickly, it's about as difficult as it's ever been. Maybe not as difficult to sell a listing if you get one, that's not the point. But, you know, Chris Havelin just put in the, in the chat box, "This is not a market for the hobbyist agents. Know and understand your stats and be prepared to give an opinion." And that's true. You know, there are a lot of consumers that want it up. You know, if my house could sell in a day, why do I need an agent? Why don't I just look for a sale by owner inside of the yard? And as, as things reopen and there's more interaction, people are going to have those questions. And you need to be able to be able to answer that question. I mean, I can tell you right now that, you know, you need an agent now more than ever. You know, how are you going to price that home? Based on things that closed? Based on Zillow? That's based on three-month-old stale data? Or based on a current fluid market that allows you to find where that house should be priced? And, but also know where that house is actually going to sell? You know, you get a house under contract, but if it doesn't appraise and they end up falling through, then you're not even going to be any better off. So getting a house under contract is different than getting a house closed. Where are you going to move to? How are you going to line that up? And, and that really leads us to our conversation today with Leah Berlin from Ribbon. Because, you know, there's a lot of different aspects of the pressures that a critically and historically low inventory market puts on sellers. And it puts sellers in a difficult position because, A, where are you going to go? So a lot of sellers don't want to list their house till they know where they're going to move to. And, you know, buying in this market can be tricky. It's not like there's two hundred choices and they can take their time and pick the one that's best for them. They may need to move fast. And everybody who's got a buyer or everybody who's got a listing knows the difficulties of coming in with a contingent upon home sale contract. Even though we know their house is going to sell, they don't have the money until it does sell. And so, you know, that's tough to go in with a contingent upon home sale market when other offers might be cash. You know, the other side, obviously, as we know, it's contingent upon financing. Well, we know there are still uncertainties in financing. Even though, you know, the Carolina One Mortgage team will get it done. We know there are a lot of people that come in with online letters or, or things that haven't been pre-approved that, you know, financing is still a variable. And so, you know, and a lot of people can't make a door-to-door move. So in the past, the only real option to over, to overcome those would probably be a bridge loan. Where you'd go to a, you'd go to a bank and if you could, you'd qualify for a bridge loan and then you'd go buy your next house using those proceeds. And then after you buy your next house, maybe you fix it up, maybe you move into it, then you get your house ready to sell. The trouble with that is you've got to qualify for that bridge loan while you have your current mortgage. And so what Ribbon came along to do, now again, remember, this is not going to apply to all buyers. Okay, this isn't going to be an option for all buyers. There are costs involved. We always talk about that. Anything that allows you to overcome a hurdle, whether it's Punch List, whether it's Ribbon, whether it's anything, is going to have a cost associated with that. But the issue, whether retiring a full-time real estate agent. But the issue is, does it help you achieve your goals and does that cost become worth it? At today's rate, houses are appreciating in the last twelve months thirteen percent a year. That's crazy rates. Okay, we sent out something company-wide that said, "Is it okay to pay for our house?" It's probably not okay to pay for a house, but it's probably okay to pay next year's price today if it's your dream house. Well, let's take the, this year out. Let's take twelve percent out. Last year, crazy. Let's take this year, which will probably be the same, out and say, "That's crazy." Let's just go to the fifteen or fifty-year average of home price appreciation, which is three percent a year. Even if Ribbon costs you two or three percent of a price of a home, if I can get the home of my dreams or the home I'm going to live in for the next twenty years and I lose one year's appreciation, that's probably worth it. So I'm not saying it's a small deal. But my point is, we've got to make sure we can put all of those things, the costs and the benefits on a scale and figure out what makes the most sense. So Ribbon came along and, and allows an option that helps us over, to overcome some of those barriers. Now, what Leah's going to do is she's going to take us through a slide deck and, and share her screen and kind of take us through. She's put in the chat box the signup link if you have a situation that might, that might fit one of your clients. But again, these are just options when you're talking to your seller, when you're on that listing appointment. And every agent in town is saying, "Here's what I will do and I'll put a house in your, sign in your yard and sell your house." And you're focused more on the client. If I'm focused on you and I'm focused not only in selling your house, but in helping you move on to the next real estate stage of your life, this is a tool you need to know about. And so Leah's going to take us through that. Put your questions in the chat box as we go through. I'm going to monitor that. And as we go through, then afterwards, we'll have some time for Q and A. And then we'll also have some ongoing Ribbon training and Leah to make herself available. Leah, I'm going to turn it over to you before you guys, don't not trust her because she's up in Connecticut. She went to elementary school at Ermo, up in, up in the mid-state. So she's, she's, you know, of us and from us, even though now she lives in that, you know, New England part.
It does say South Carolina, so, you know, I do have that.
Absolutely. So that gives you some instant credibility. So now we're going to let you take us through the slide deck. You guys put your comments in the chat box and we'll go from there.
All right. Well, thank you so much for the intro, Michael. And yeah, everything that you said is true and, and we'll go through how Ribbon is helping agents right now in this market. And I'll make sure I'm super clear about timelines and how you get started using the program. That's why I shared that signup link. That's where you would get started if you are interested in using the service. And if you're on your phone right now, we'll make sure that's emailed around so you have an easy access to, to sign up if you're interested. But exactly what, what Michael just said, you know, Ribbon is out to make homeownership achievable and we're doing that by leveling the playing field and providing certainty around the real estate transaction. You know, we want you to be able to utilize cash to make all your buyers cash buyers. Convert all their offers into non-contingent offers and guarantee the closing and really, you know, help them get under contract. You know, that's what, that's what we're here to do and that's what we're setting out as our goal. So we'll go over what we're doing to partner with the agent community to solve some of the most challenging parts of the home buying process, especially in today's market. How it exactly works, like what does it mean to make a Ribbon offer? What does that look like? How am I converting my offer with Ribbon's cash? And how you can get started using the program if you do have a buyer who is interested? I also want to make sure that you guys know that I'm your, your, your go-to. If, you know, when you sign up, you do get a Ribbon advisor, but if there's any issues, always feel free to escalate to me. I'm here for whatever the Carolina One team needs. So I know there's a lot of options out there right now for buyers and sellers. There's a lot of i-buyers in the market right now. And Ribbon is not like an i-buyer. You know, there's a lot of differences in our program that I like to highlight. We're really here to empower you as the agents. This is a specific tool for agents. We do not market to buyers. And buyers have to have representation to use our service. So, you know, we really are relying on you as the agent to, to use our services. This is in a direct-to-to-consumer product. And we also, we, in addition to not having our own agents, we don't have our own lenders or inspectors. So we're, you use all the same people you normally do. You know, your trusted Carolina One Mortgage advisor is still going to be your, your go-to person. We're just that third party, that additional option that's helping you be competitive in today's market. Since we started transacting in 2018, we have granted over one point four billion dollars in buying power. That's thousands of families enabled with the ability to make a cash offer through Ribbon. And we are growing at exponential numbers this past year. You know, at the beginning of COVID, it wasn't, we weren't sure how is it going to affect the real estate market and it's shown that it just went through the roof. It's absolutely insane. We're going to double this number by the end of the year. That's how fast we're growing. So we want to give you access to our cash too and your buyer's access to that cash so that, you know, they can make the strongest offer in real estate. You know, as Michael was just talking about, it's, it's really hard to, to get under contract right now. Really high buyer demand, low inventory. It's just moving so quickly. Things are going under contract really fast. A lot of cash buyers in the market making it really competitive. You know, the most common things I'm hearing right now is multiple offer situations are killing me and my buyer. And it's hard for me to get my seller off the sideline. You know, they, they want to move. They want to list their home, but they're hesitant because, you know, great, my home is going to sell in a day, but where am I going to go to? I can't get under contract on something else because I have a home sale contingency on my offer and it's this vicious cycle. So Ribbon is offering you solutions to solve those problems right now. Help you get more listings because you can offer your sellers an option of getting under contract before they've listed their current home so that they know they've secured something and helping your, your buyers who keep getting stuck in multiple offer situations be more competitive. So these are the three Ribbon cash solutions. First up, we've got the Ribbon Boost. This is great for your, your buyer who is in a competitive price point, maybe an FHA or VA loan. They have something on their contract that is, keeps prohibiting them from getting under contract. They can't compete against the conventional loans with high-down payments. They can't compete against the cash offers. You've showed them ten properties. They make an offer on everyone. Everyone they offer on has fifteen other offers on the table and it's just impossible. You know, I'm not going to sit here and pretend like Ribbon is, is going to be like the magic thing that always gets you under contract. But we are definitely seeing a lot of success in these situations of just upgrading the offer, making it more competitive, making it cash, removing those contingencies, getting that person under contract. So the fee is different for each of these services and I'll get into that after this, but.
Leah, let me jump in one second.
Sure.
While we get some questions that are in here to make sure. Yeah, we cover maybe a couple of these questions.
Sure.
So is Ribbon going to be for owner-occupant properties only? Or can Ribbon also be used for investors?
Ribbon cannot be used for investors. I do have, I have a slide on home eligibility so we could get into the, the nitty-gritty of exactly the kind of properties that we can back, which is pretty wide. So there's not a, a ton of restrictions. But one of the restrictions is it does need to be owner-occupied. So.
On the home they're buying is going to be something they're going to be moving into?
Correct, yes. And in terms of like primary residence, if you have someone who's maybe like a snowbird or something, if, as long as they're listing, like if they have another property somewhere else, as long as they're making that property their second property. If, as long as they're listing, like if they have another property somewhere else, as long as they're making that property their second property and the home they're purchasing, their primary residence. And, you know, the, their primary, then they should have no problem using the, the service.
Great, thank you. I just want to cover that question as they come in.
Absolutely. So the ribbon cash solutions, you know, that offer upgrade that we just went through. That's a one percent fee and we'll go into the more about the fees and, and costs and like what, what is due when and all that kind of stuff and how it's paid. But just so you know, that offer upgrade is the ability just to make the cash offer. So that's just making your offer more competitive, not actually using ribbon to close on the property, just using ribbon's cash to make the offer. To make it more competitive and increase the likelihood that it gets accepted over other offers. So think of it as like an insurance policy where you're saying, you know, you, you have car insurance, right? Everyone has insurance. But they might not get in an automobile accident and need to utilize that insurance, but you're still paying a premium for the certainty. Of knowing and that peace of mind of knowing that something's covering you just in case. And that's exactly what that ribbon boost option is. That's knowing that ribbon's backing the offer. And they're going to buy the house even if your buyer doesn't, if something happens. You know, we're still there to purchase the home and that's, that safety, that guarantee is what's giving the seller peace of mind and accepting the ribbon offer. So not only is it cash, non-contingent, but there's that guarantee there. So hopefully that helps get you under contract a lot faster.
So that would work. So, so give us, give us a practical, common sense. Kind of example of that. Is, is that the homeowner that instead of, you know. Instead of making a. Contingent upon finance offer or contingent upon home sale offer, even though you know they can sell their home. And even though you know they can get a loan, and even though they're pursuing those options, they're able to come in with a cash offer.
Yep.
But then between when that closing is, because a lot of sellers want obviously time, a lot of people don't want to close in two weeks, even though I know ribbon could. So you're supposed to close in thirty or forty-five days, but you're able to make a contingent or non-contingent cash offer. But then in the meantime, they sell their home, they get their loan and they just close on it directly. Is that the scenario you're talking about there?
Correct. And then they pay a reduced fee for that. And a perfect example of this that I can, I mean, this has happened multiple times in the last like six months or so. Because this is what we're seeing commonly right now. That maybe they're a first time home buyer that has a low down payment. They're getting a loan, an FHA loan or something like that. Where they're only putting down three percent, three and a half percent. And they're losing out to like consistently to conventional loans where people are putting down twenty, twenty-five percent. Or all cash offers and they know they're going to be able to close. They have the financing under control. But their offers aren't getting accepted because the sellers have all these other cash offers or like, you know, less risky financing. Options that they're going with those instead. Another great example is VA buyers. People just get turned off on VA loans. Because there's different like inspection and appraisal requirements that they have to be concerned about. So they're going with the, the safer conventional or cash options. And this is a way to remove that from the equation altogether. You don't have to put that their FHA VA, you just put their cash because it's backed by ribbon's cash and then you don't have.
We've all talked about, you know, how cash can be, you know, that, that game changer and something we've talked about. You know, I, I, I know a cash buyer that won a multiple offer situation. Not because they were the highest offer, but because they were cash. And, and so we've all seen that. So in, in some scenarios, even though you may end up paying that one percent fee, you could theoretically save that in not having to go one percent higher. In your offer, you know, and, and win it with cash. Two quick questions that are in the chat box and I'll let you continue. I assume you're going to get to how they write the offer and who's actually listed as the buyer. So we'll get to that one in a second. But under something like this, I assume this can be used by a buyer who doesn't have a home to sell.
Correct. Yeah, we, so a year ago, most of our clientele where people with a home to sell, that's the next one that we'll talk about, this ribbon reserve. But seventy-five percent of the deals we're doing right now are first time home buyers. These are people who just like, they can't compete with as high of down payments and they're just using us to, to get under contract. Because there's no other way for them right now.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, keep going.
Yeah. So this ribbon reserve, this is that buy before you sell option. This is that modern day bridge loan for the person who can't qualify for an actual bridge loan. Or doesn't want to spend the money on an actual bridge loan because they can be, you know, more expensive of an option. So if you're working with someone who has a home to sell, all the equity is tied up in that home. They need that equity to purchase something new and are having difficulty timing the two sales, figuring out. Okay, I can't get under contract on something new because I have this home sale contingency. So I don't want to list this because it's going to sell fast. Then I'm going to have to, you know, scramble to find something. And, you know, I don't want to have to, you know, deal with that timing issue. Now they can utilize ribbon to make a, a offer that has, doesn't have a home sale contingency on it. Get under contract on it, move in if they want to. And then. They can sell their current home, you know, at maximum value. So an example of, of how I'm seeing people utilize this right now is twofold. Either they're, you know, they know they're actually going to be able to sell their home in time and they're hoping to be able to take advantage of that ribbon boost. So, you know, just taking the contingencies off and being able to close on their own. But they also, you know, maybe will want to like upgrade their home. You know, maybe they've lived in it for twenty, thirty years and their bathrooms need updating and they'll get a lot more money for their house. It'll sell faster and for top dollar. If they stage it and paint it and all that stuff, but they don't want to be there while the work is being done. They can use our service to move in to that new home, you know, ribbon buys it for them. They can fix up their old home, you know. They have two kids, a, a couple of dogs, a cat, you know, they're working from home. They have a busy life. Maybe they don't want to be there during showings. This is a way for them to move out and, you know, move right into their new home, not having to live in temporary housing, not to put their stuff in storage. And then, you know, take the time to fix up their home, to make those improvements and, and hopefully sell for top dollar.
And again, that, that's one of those situations where as the professional Realtor, you guys are going to be able to evaluate those clients. So, you know, Chris Havlin put in the chat box, they need to be able to carry their current mortgage and the rent on the property they're buying at the same time. Absolutely. So, you know, that, that first time home buyer may or may not work depending on obviously when they can time it. So they may be able to move directly in, like we said, so they don't have double situation. But in some situations, you as the Realtor know, man, if I could get these people out of here and we did some paint and some carpet. I can get an extra ten grand for this house. Well, you know what? That might be worth spending X dollars to get the house they want. When you can't, might be able to recoup some of those fees on the other side.
And it is truly prorated to the day rent too. We'll get into that, we'll get into that rent stuff. But it, it is prorated. So it's not like they're having to pay for a month, but maybe they only need like a week. They're only paying for the days that they actually need to rent. So that is something to consider too, you know, it, it might end up being way less costly to use this kind of thing than to. Move twice. They have to hire movers twice, have to get that storage unit, have to live in temporary housing and then move again into their new home. Example here is a new, I have a new construction example of my, my own dad who couldn't use the ribbon service because we're not in Florida yet. But, you know, he was purchasing a new construction home. He had his home to sell. They were, you know, new construction can be uncertain with timelines, especially right now. Like the, it might take longer to, to build or, you know, get the materials needed. There's lots of delays. So they were struggling with when exactly they needed to list, be ordered to, to sell in time to be able to close on, on the new construction property. So what they did was listed, it sold really fast, much faster than they anticipated. They were going to live in like a, you know, a hotel, basically one of those extended stay hotels for just a couple of weeks until they could close on the new construction. But then the timeline on the new construction got pushed back two months. So then they were stuck with, okay, great. Now my house is sold. What am I doing in this time in between? They had, they got an Airbnb. They had to actually move every month. So their stuff was in storage. They're, you know, moving from Airbnb to Airbnb until their new construction property is finished. And then, you know, finally, when it's done, being able to close on it and then move again into their final home and get their stuff out of storage. Where they could have avoided that situation altogether with ribbon. By going under contract on the new construction property with ribbon guaranteeing it. They wouldn't have to worry about when they're listing their current home to sell. Because if it didn't, if the timing didn't line up exactly, ribbon was still purchasing that new construction property for them. So they knew it was secure and they could, you know, wait till it was. They knew it was going to be completed. They knew they'd be able to move in before listing their current homes. They didn't have to struggle so much with that timing.
Sure. I'm going to go back and I know you'll cover the cost of ribbon reserve, which was one question. I stopped you before you got to that, so let you do that. Alicia had a question, said, what about revising the language in the agreement to buy and sell? Doesn't the seller need to agree to the change? Agreed to a cash offer, but now going to be contingent upon financing.
That is a great question. Yeah.
But the issue, Alicia, is it's not now contingent upon financing. Remember, you, you can make a cash offer on a home and get a mortgage. You know, there, that doesn't matter. It doesn't mean when I say there's a cash offer. That's why it's so important to get proof of funds. Because if somebody says there's a cash offer, and usually it's a combination of cash or financing, depending on what they say. It doesn't necessarily prohibit them from showing up and getting a mortgage now. And we've had that issue sometimes where all of a sudden somebody sends out an appraiser and a seller is upset, says, wait a minute, I thought this was cash. Their offer may not be contingent upon getting a loan. And if that loan gets denied, the buyer can't terminate. And maybe the buyer has the cash, but there are some situations where a buyer has the cash, but they still decide, hey. I'd like to go ahead and get a mortgage at three percent and close with lender financing. You know, and just show up at the closing table with a loan and that would not require a seller's approval. Because there's no contingent requirement. As long as I can make my closing date, as long as I'm doing that, that wouldn't require a seller's approval for a buyer to show up with a loan. As long as it doesn't delay anything. Now, where we see that change sometimes is somebody say, well, now I need the seller to participate. Sign that, a VA addendum or sign some of those things. And you're correct, that would be a different scenario. Because a seller would have to consent to that. But if you made a cash offer, you could in theory show up at the closing table and get a mortgage. I go, what are you doing? I just decided to get a mortgage. But, you know, I've got my cash right here if I needed to close. So that'd be okay if you wanted to, or some people close cash and then get a refi that they could do as well. So, you know, no, that wouldn't require a seller to agree if you had a ribbon agreeing to buy it. But then all of a sudden, your financing falls into place and you take care of it.
Yep, that's exactly right. When you're marketing the offer as cash because it's backed by ribbon's cash, all you're doing is saying. Financing is not going to be a reason why I don't purchase this home.
The same as you still are selling your home, but it's not contingent upon. So last question, I'll look at that. You go ahead. So Deborah Carson says, so ribbon will not be, will not the seller and sign all agreements. Like VA addendum. Yeah, we'll talk about how they handle it.
Yes.
The sell along, along the way. As far as ribbon will be the buyer and who's signing a VA addendum in that type of situation. But going back to Susan's cost, what's the cost of ribbon reserve? And I'll let you kind of continue through a little bit and try to keep working through the questions.
Sure. So ribbon reserve is two percent of the purchase price. This is only if ribbon actually ends up purchasing the property. So if we don't end up purchasing it because let's say they put a realistic end date on the contract and they're actually able to sell their home. And, you know, re, you know, close on, on the new one as normal and they don't end up needing ribbon's cash. Then that fee drops to that ribbon boost option. That's when ribbon is not actually buying the home. So you would be able to take advantage of that one percent fee if you didn't actually need ribbon to end up purchasing the home for your, for your buyer. Buyer seller, I guess, in this case. So that's.
So when we talk about two percent, if a house is four thousand, four hundred thousand dollars, it's eight thousand dollars. If ribbon buys the home and then the buyer rents it from ribbon after that. Or if ribbon doesn't need to buy the home and the buyer closes directly, one percent on a four hundred thousand dollar house being four thousand dollars. Just so we're clear on what the percentage is based on. And it does not impact the agent's commission. You guys get paid. This co-op commission based on the purchase price of the home, when ribbon closes on it, you only get paid once. So when the buyer buys a room, you don't get paid again. But you get paid and I'm, and I know Leah will talk about how that fee can be paid or how it can be worked into the contract.
Yep. And I'll just go over the last option and then we'll, we'll get more into like the, the rent and how all that's calculated. And, you know, reiterate the costs associated with everything. But this last one is the, the ribbon rescue. So if you're already under contract and your buyer is now in danger of falling out of contract. There's a lender delay. I know they're doing a lot of like refinancing right now and my own closing was delayed. Because of, you know, my lender not getting stuff they needed back from underwriting and stuff like that. Because they're working on so many different things right now. So if you are in a situation like that where the seller will not extend the close date, like they're, you know, you just need some kind of option to give your, your buyer more time. They don't, they've already put down so much earnest money. It was already so difficult for them to get under contract in the first place. They love this home. They don't want to lose it. Ribbon can still step in on those transactions and help save the deal. So that is also an option. It's three percent if we're actually closing on the property for them on this ribbon rescue. Just because there's a little more like work on our end to put ourselves on a contract and, and end up closing for someone. Who is already under, like, under contract. So that is three percent for, for ribbon rescue. We obviously want to encourage people to use that ribbon reserve and originate their offer with ribbon instead. So, you know, that is an option. If you are in that situation, you can add us into the contract after the fact. If that is something that, that you're in need of. So just to reiterate, we talked about the pricing. If ribbon, the, you're going into the contract not knowing if your buyer is actually going to be able to close or not, right? So you may want, you're intending to use that ribbon boost option. And not have ribbon actually close on the property, but there's no way of knowing when you make the offer that your buyer is actually going to be able to close on time. So we have to start the transaction assuming that we're going to have to close on the property. So that fee, that two percent fee needs to be reflected in their earnest money deposit or in seller concessions if there are any. It can be split anyway between those, you know, as the market shifts and, you know, maybe down the road and. In a year or so, maybe it becomes more of a buyer's market or at least more of a stable market. And maybe sellers will start offering some concessions again. If that's the case, if there's one percent in concessions and your buyer only needs to put one percent in their earnest money deposit. But two percent needs to be shown on the contract between earnest money and seller paid closing costs. So we know our fee is covered because it's paid from those earnest money or seller paid closing costs. So we need to make sure that two percent is covered somewhere. If they don't end up needing ribbon to purchase, we just take the one percent. The, whatever is left over in their deposits and seller paid closing costs over that one, or over that one percent gets credited to their purchase as it normally would. So that's how that fee works. And if you're coming to us already under contract and you're use, using that ribbon rescue. Then you have to have three percent down in earnest money and seller paid closing costs. But again, it still drops to one percent if you're able to figure it out and end up not needing ribbon. To purchase. The costs are very clear and transparent. So these are the only costs to use the program. It's just the fee. And the rent, if we end up buying it, there are no other costs to use our service. There's no additional closing costs. There's no like hidden fees or anything. This is literally it. We pay the closing costs. If we close on the property, your buyer is just paying them when they repurchase. So there's no double charging of, of that. They're still paying their inspector and, and stuff like that. So all the normal transaction costs that you get every time you purchase a home are the same. It's just the ribbon fee and the rent if we end up purchasing it. Those are the only two costs to use the service outside of the standard transaction fees. That rent is again prorated. So what that means is we're closing for a house for them on June first. And they have to pay the month of June because it'd be ridiculous to collect rent from someone every day. That would be really difficult. So we're collecting it monthly, but they're getting a credit back for time that they paid for, but didn't end up needing to use the ribbon program. So, you know, we bought it on June first. They're able to repurchase on June tenth. We give them a credit for the eleventh through the thirtieth for time that they had paid for, but didn't end up actually needing to use ribbon services. So, you know, if they're, as soon as they're able to repurchase, they can. There's no minimum rental time period. It's just the maximum of a hundred and eighty days. And, you know, after that hundred and eighty days, if they're unable to repurchase, there's no penalty. They would just have to vacate the property. So, you know, again, only cost is this ribbon fee and the rent if we do end up having to purchase the property for them. That rent starts the day after we close and they can move in, you know, that day after we close as well. And, you know.
Let me cover it. Let me ask you a couple of things, just, you know, and again, you may get to some of these things, but things people are thinking about. So when ribbon closes, just so everyone's clear, that two percent ribbon's going to collect. So on a four hundred thousand dollar house, they get eight thousand dollars. Ribbon is going to be responsible for paying customary buyer closing costs. So ribbon's going to end up paying the, you know, deed stamps and the attorney's fees. And, you know, all of those things when they purchase. And then when the buyer purchases for ribbon, the purchase price for the buyer is the same as the purchase price ribbon paid. And then the buyer pays all their normal closing costs. So their attorney's fees and stuff like that. So the buyer pays the same closing cost that they would have paid, but inside that two percent, ribbon's absorbing. The cost of actually acquiring. the cost of actually acquiring and purchasing the property. So, you know, that's how those, those closing costs get absorbed. You did mention, you know, they're, they have six month rental. If, if they can't close within that time, they obviously move out. So, you know, it's.
There's no foreclosure process, you know, we own the home. So there's no like financial penalty or like hit to their credit or anything if they don't repurchase. We're doing our due diligence before we let someone make an offer to hopefully ensure that they will repurchase, because that's not the goal here for us to, to have people live in houses that they can't buy back. So we'll get into that a little bit too, but I do want to cover what the rent is made out of. So.
Now, one question before we get to the rent. What if house falls through?
So if it fall, they have the inspection period to back out of the contract. So the inspection is the only contingency we don't remove, which I'll get into too. But if they, if they decide to back out of the contract during that inspection period, there's no penalty to them. They wouldn't owe ribbon anything. If they had put a due diligence deposit down to the seller, they would lose that. But otherwise, they, they still have that inspection period to back out of the contract and not owe anyone anything.
Great.
Yep.
All right, go ahead, go through. And the next one's the cost and how the rent. I know that's coming up.
Yeah. So I just want to also highlight, you know, how the rent is calculated. So yeah, that, that fee again is inclusive of the closing costs. If we do close on the property, you know, the cost of ribbon is really 1%. That extra percent is to cover all our closing costs and transaction, like overhead of our own employees who then have to manage the, the repurchase and stuff. So that's what that additional 1% is paying for. So, you know, ribbon's profit is that 1% essentially. So the rent is also exact to our holding cost. We're not making money off of the rent. The rent is what we're paying to hold the property. So it's inclusive of taxes on that property, insurance. So we're carrying insurance on the property itself. So, you know, if anything happens during like a storm or whatever, then, you know, we're covering that. It's inclusive of HOA fees if there are any on the property. And it's also our cost of capital. So part of, you know, going back to that proof of funds that we mentioned before and putting that and making sure that, you know, the seller knows that we have the, the funds to cover this purchase, you will get a proof of funds letter to attach to your purchase agreement along with our addendum. And that proof of fund shows that we have $200 million in cash from Goldman Sachs, who's our investor, who's given us the cash to purchase these homes. And we have to pay them on the money that we've borrowed from them. So that is included in the rent as well. So you would know what that rent was upfront before your buyer even decided to move forward, making an offer with ribbon. So that would not be a surprise to them if they made an offer with us. And then suddenly it's like, oh, this is what the rent would be if I have to, you know, if ribbon actually has to purchase the home for me, they would know it upfront. It would not be a surprise to them. So that's something important to note there on, on that rental piece as well. How you're actually making the ribbon offer is there's an addendum that you attach to the purchase agreement that makes us the backup buyer on the offer. So the language in that addendum tells the seller, if for whatever reason, this buyer cannot secure financing to purchase this home, ribbon will step in and purchase it on their behalf. So we're guaranteeing the transaction to them. This is, this addendum is why you can mark the offer as cash, because it, you know, it's converting the offer to cash. It's saying ribbon's cash is backing this offer. It's removing that financing, home sale and appraisal contingency. And it's guaranteeing that the property will close after it passes that inspection period. You can do as little as seven days of an inspection period. So it can be really short. You do have to provide ribbon with a copy of the inspection report so that we can review it for any ribbon required repairs, which are safety and structural. That's if ribbon does have to purchase the home and we end up being a landlord and, and your client, a tenant for a short period of time until they can repurchase. We have to make sure certain safety guidelines are met. So that, that part is something that we can't remove. That has been like a question that I get a lot, that some people are waiving the inspection contingency. And unfortunately, we cannot waive that, that piece of it, but it is a short period. So it can be that seven days. And just provide.
And it could in theory be inspected before it goes under contract.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Now, there are ways to not, not waive that, but have that kind of teed up, ready to go. If somebody says, well, I'm not really looking to do that. I mean, there, sometimes there are things that can be done that way.
Yep, absolutely. And, you know, these, something to highlight to the, the listing agent and seller is also that this offer is better than cash, because a cash buyer can still walk away from the transaction. They can decide they don't want it. I'll lose my earnest money. I'll go somewhere else. Ribbon is guaranteeing the transaction. So let's say we're past the inspection period and then your buyer gets cold feet. You know, they could still walk away and ribbon is stuck purchasing that home still. We're guaranteeing the sale to the seller after that inspection period is passed. So ribbon will still purchase the home, even if your buyer is walking away. So hopefully that's not the case, but that is what would happen in that situation. And that's why the ribbon offer is so strong. So these are the steps that you would actually have to take to make the ribbon offer. We talked about that addendum, that proof of funds. We also have a seller cover letter. In order to get those documents, you have to do a few things first. So one, I shared that link in the, the chat and I'll again, make sure that it circulated via email after this presentation. If you're interested in getting started. You would add your buyer, you'd sign, you sign up yourself, you make the account, you add your buyer. It doesn't cost anything to sign up and add your buyer and get them through this process. They're not committed to using our service. You know, you can just play around with it and see what it's like. Highly recommend that you go in and get your account manager. So you know who your point of contact is. It gets assigned to you when you sign up. Their contact information is in your account. So when you log into your account on the bottom left hand of the screen, there'll be like a little face there of your account manager and their email and phone number. So you know who to contact if you actually want to make a ribbon offer. So no harm in getting that all set up so that you're set up for success. This is the biggest question that I've been getting lately is the turnaround times, you know, how fast can you move, that kind of stuff? So to be completely transparent with you guys, we are growing exponentially and we're hiring like crazy to keep up with the demand. We like to stay under 24 hours for a turnaround time. Lately, it's been 24 to 48. Again, set yourself up for success. Add the buyer now. Upload their preapproval now. There's no harm in getting them set up so that you're ready to move quickly if they do find something that they're interested in and want to make an offer through ribbon. Know that if it does take longer than that time period, that that's not normal. Be in contact with that ribbon advisor. Let them know, all right, I'm going to see this property. I think they're going to be really interested in it. I'm adding this home for valuation. I'm going to, you know, the best and final are due by 8:00 PM tomorrow. Let them know so that they can manage expectations on our valuations team and can prioritize your valuation for when it needs to be completed. So really, really, really strongly recommend signing up, getting that ribbon advisor and making sure that you're in constant contact with them so that they know what's going on with your offers and can help you get your valuations prioritized if it's necessary. The value.
How are you all? We, you know, we've had a couple of things. You know, i- in the, in the chat box, which makes, you know, which, which are legit, but obviously concerns, which is how do you guys handle the valuation now?
Yeah.
We're always going to have valuation issues. And I just put that in the chat box to Dan in this kind of market. I, I saw, I talked to an agent yesterday who was very unhappy that they, you know, have a listing and a buyer. It sold, you know, and one day it's under contract, $22,000. The appraisal's $22,000 short. And they think they have the comps. They think they have the buyer, you know, everybody wants to, to move forward, but, you know, the appraiser came in $22,000 under the contract price. And, and that happened. So, you know, I know prices are going up. And how do you guys handle, or are you guys using AVMs, which, which is obviously an issue? Because they're going to be based on public record data, which is going to be three months old and not maybe where the market is headed. How much human interaction is there? How much do you guys want or are willing to accept from an agent representing the buyer to say, here's why the value is there? Because I know we're going to have deals that come in short and, and that's going to happen. But how do you guys handle that in a general sense? Because we know this isn't going to fit all sizes, especially as people are paying more. And remember, ribbon's agreeing to buy this home. And if the buyer walks away from it, ribbon still has this home. And so one of the concerns obviously is nobody wants to be getting stuck with a home that's, you know, overpriced.
Yeah. So, I mean, obviously two main points of liability for us as a company, and we have to mitigate our risk on, is the property we're purchasing and the buyer we're purchasing it for. So we need to make sure that buyer is qualified to repurchase from us. And we also need to make sure we're not purchasing a property for more than, you know, we'll be able to resell it for or more than, you know, it's worth, because then your buyer can't buy it back from us, right? If it doesn't appraise. So we are looking at the property through an appraiser's eyes. We have a team of valuations experts who have done appraisals for a living for years and years and years. They're doing a comp search just as an appraiser would. So they're looking a mile radius sales in the last six months to determine that ribbon max valuation. We do know that the market's moving really quickly and we are taking that into consideration with our valuation. So they are adding in a buffer on the valuations. I think it's around 4% right now. So that is added on to what, you know, what they think the home will appraise for. And then they're adding that, that buffer in to account for how fast things are moving. I will say that if you disagree with our valuation, you can always reach out to your ribbon advisor. That's why I recommend setting up your account now, making sure you know who they are and who their contact information is. So you're not scrambling at the last minute trying to figure something out. You can reach out to that person with comps and we can supply those to our valuations team to, you know, they're human. These are humans doing these valuations. It is not an algorithm spitting out a number. They very well might have missed a comp. Maybe they're not considering certain upgrades or something that was made. Let them know. We'll see if we can change our valuation, but just as Michael said, like we, we have to mitigate risk on our end to make sure we're not purchasing something for more than we think it's worth. We also offer appraisal protection on every offer that we put out. So we need to make sure that, you know, we're not going to be paying out the wazoo because it didn't appraise. Cause what's happening is, I think I have an example here. List price 300, max ribbon value 310. That means we're guaranteeing it will appraise at 310. If your buyer goes in and makes an offer at the 310 saying, okay, ribbon said it would appraise for this amount, I'm going to offer that, that full amount and say it only appraises for 300, then ribbon is making up that $10,000 difference between what it appraised for and what we allowed the buyer to make an offer for. So we really need to make sure that we're confident in the number that we're putting out so that we know it will appraise. There has definitely been situations where ribbon is making up that difference. That's not appraising and ribbon's putting in the cash. So when the seller receives a ribbon offer, there's no appraisal contingency, right? We're guaranteeing the number on that contract. They know there's going to be no renegotiation. And that's another strength of the ribbon offer. If your buyer wants to go over that ribbon max value, you know, maybe you as the agent, you've run the comps, you know, it's not going to appraise for more. So there's no comps to support it. You agree with the ribbon valuation, but unfortunately, the way the market is, your buyer is still going to have to go over to win. They can definitely do that. They can go over ribbon max valuation, but they have to put the additional cash into their earnest money deposit. So they're already having to put the 2% down to cover the ribbon fee. But let's say they want to offer 320 on this home. They could do that. They would need to put that additional $10,000 into their earnest money deposit so that we knew they had the cash to make up the difference between our valuation and what they offered, if it didn't appraise.
Sure. And they'll get credit for that when they close on the house with ribbon.
It will, if it doesn't appraise, they'll, they'll have to use that cash, obviously, to make.
Correct, correct. But I'm saying, I'm saying they're agreeing to buy the house from ribbon for 320.
Exactly.
So regardless, they're only going to pay 320. So if they put up that 10, they'll obviously have to bring 310 to closing, plus closing cost, but meaning they don't lose that. So again, you know, if, if the buyer really believes in that valuation, you know, there are ways to, just like a mortgage, to bring that cash to closing. Now that's not going to help your 3% down, you know, FHA buyer, but you know, that, that will help.
Yeah. And no situation is the same. And that ribbon advisor is a great resource to you because they're working with hundreds of other agents. And they're, they're seeing what other people are doing to get under contract. So they can help you kind of strategize how you should put the offer together. And, you know, help you out in, in that regard. If you're, if you're struggling on like, you know, how should I structure this so that it's the most, you know, beneficial to, to my buyer? You also get that rent number back with evaluation. So that's where you would know here, okay, this, you can tell, lay it out, the cost to your client. They would know exactly how much they would be paying if we did end up purchasing for it. So all that information is, is given to them. And then after that valuation, we just have, I mean, or before, what I recommend is signing up, getting your buyer in there, uploading their preapproval. So all that part is set. You just take their lender preapproval letter. We confirm that income, assets and credit have been checked and verified. Once we've done that, they have their buying power and they're ready to make a ribbon offer. So we have that valuation, you know, they gave us their preapproval. They're ready to make, make the offer with ribbon. We give you that proof of funds, a seller cover letter, all that good stuff, that agreement, and then you just attach it to your, your purchase agreement. Send it off. So we have, we have product like on our site that makes it very, very easy to put together your purchase agreement. So we, we have the standard South Carolina purchase agreement uploaded. All the standard South Carolina addenda are in there. So you can click and add different things that you want. Our addenda will automatically get added with our proof of funds and seller cover letter. When you're on the site making the offer, it will just prompt you to enter information. It'll ask you, what's your buyer's name? Cause your buyer's name is on the contract. We're just the backup buyer on that addendum. It'll ask you for the price you want to offer. It'll ask you for your intended close date and your inspection period and all that stuff. And then it will pre-populate all that information onto the purchase agreement. And then you can either download it and send it through DocuSign or Dot Loop or HelloSign or whatever you guys are using. Or it will say, you know, do you want to send directly to the listing agent through the app? And then you could just send it off to them. It will email it directly to their inbox and you can manage it that way through, through the ribbon site if you want to. So those are the two options on how you can actually download and send the, the offer. So this timeline slide is great because we can go through exactly from start to finish, what the, the offer process looks like. So we just talked about how to qualify your buyer, you know, getting that valuation and, and also getting the, the preapproval uploaded and confirmed. Once we have those two things, your buyer is ready to make an offer. They say, great. I know that if I, if ribbon does have to purchase this home, I'm comfortable with that rent for whatever period of time. My, I know my home's going to sell really fast, so it might only be like a week that I need to rent. That's fine. They make the offer, it gets accepted. After that accepted offer, your buyer is submitting their deposits, just as they typically would to the, the closing agent. They have that seven period minimum inspection period. They're giving that copy of the inspection report to ribbon at least a couple of days prior to that inspection period ending so that we know we can have time to review and see if there's any ribbon required repairs. After that inspection period is over, we're guaranteeing the closing and we're guaranteeing an on-time closing. So whatever date is listed on that contract is what we're, we're guaranteeing. We can close in as little as 14 business days. So it's another great lever to pull. If you're working with a seller who's motivated by a quick close, that's a very, very fast closing. So, you know, note that you can close in as little as 14 business days. Obviously, if you have a buyer who's going to want to close on their own, take advantage of that ribbon boost, give them enough time to be able to get their financing in order to, to close. But on closing day, one of two things happens, right? Either your buyer was able to get their financing in, in time and they're able to close on their own. They pay the 1% from their earnest money. It's shown as an additional settlement on the HUD or Ulta statement. It's just like a miscellaneous charge, 1% to ribbon fee. We're collecting that 1%. They're closing on it as normal. Everything else is standard transaction. Second option, ribbon does have to purchase the property for them. They were not able to get their financing together. Maybe their house didn't sell in time. There were lender delays, whatever the issue was. Ribbon is now having to purchase the home for them. So they need to utilize that ribbon reserve. At that point, then our 2% is taken out, just as the 1% would be from earnest money or seller paid closing costs. Again, listed as an additional settlement and miscellaneous charge on the HUD Ulta statement, you know, fee to ribbon. Then we're closing on the property. You know, again, we're covering closing costs if we close on the property. And then your buyer has 180 days to repurchase from us at the same price that we bought it for. Your commission is always paid at that first closing. So no matter if we're buying it or your buyer's buying it, you're always paid at that first closing. Your commissions are completely unaffected by the ribbon program. So whatever was agreed to and the listing originally is what you will be paid. And that's the, that's the start to finish timeline here. So I don't know if there's any more questions, Michael, but the only thing I have left to cover is really this home eligibility. So if there's any other questions on this part of it, I can address those now and then we can get into the home eligibility.
No, go ahead and do the home eligibility one.
Okay.
And, and then we'll, you know, we'll have some additional training. We'll send this video out. That'll have these slides in there as well. I know we've got some additional collateral and other pieces that you guys can use in listing presentations and other such. So it'll be an ongoing process, but we're at about 11:12 now. And, and I know we try to keep these to about. So it'll be an ongoing process, but we're at about 11, 12 now. And and I know um, we try to keep these to about an hour. So. Um, we'll go ahead and wrap this one up in the next couple of minutes and then we'll, we'll do some additional training. Don't worry. We're, and obviously Leah also introduced you as you go through these for the first time with your, with the area wide rep. Um, you know, it'll get more familiar as more people go through these because it is still something new. Um, industry wide. These have traditionally been handled with, you know, bridge loans, which again, have all the same requirements. The bank's not going to lend you money without an appraisal to make sure the house appraises without making sure you qualify and that you can, you know, either handle that mortgage. You're going to have to pay the bank interest. You're going to have to pay your own taxes and insurance. So that's the rent double payment side. The bank's going to charge you various fees to close that loan. So you know, it really is a comparable type product. The issue is how do we make the easier? You know, um, and Susan, they did, they'll, they'll calculate the rent. It's based on their holding costs, interest, taxes. Um, you know, and insurance. So they don't know exactly what it'll be until they go through that, but they'll cover that upfront. Um, and tell you that number. So go ahead, Leah, about you guys buy box, kind of what properties are inside of the ribbon window? And then we'll kind of wrap this up.
Yep. So buy box, um, 150 to 700. There's a little asterix there. So if you go a little over, a little under, it's possible that we can still do it. Just work with your ribbon advisor on those on case by case. Uh, fewer than four acres, built 1975 or renovated. That ties back to our inspection. We just want to make sure we're not buying houses that are about to fall down. Just in case we are stuck with them. Um, and within an MSA, which you guys will have absolutely no problem with everywhere, like hours radius around Charleston isn't within an MSA. So you're good there. Um, we can't do bank owned properties, so no foreclosures, short sales, can't do prefab homes. Um, and then we talked about that second home investor property. As long, you know, if they have other investment properties, fine. And as long as the home they're purchasing is is meant for a primary residence. And their um, their lender, you know, says so, then that's all that we're looking for there. So no second homes or investment properties. It does need to be. Primary residence. Um, so that's the the general buy box stuff, you know, there. Again, you can get started. I I shared the link. There's also a text to sign up link. Um, if you guys um, would like to to create an account. But I just want to end by saying like, you know, you get paid the same whether you show a client two properties or 15 properties. So ribbon's just a a great way to get someone under contract faster, give them more options. Um, you know, lenders too, help your borrowers pull through, um, you know, get. Get them under contract on 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 an earlier home instead of having to, you know, spend a lot of time with them and take them to like a million different properties and keep making offers. That get declined. So.
And Leah, and Leah may not want to hear this, guys, but a- at the end of the day. Our focus is on making you better prepared when you're in that listing presentation, talking to that seller. You know, personally, if your seller gets the home, the best way and least expensive way for them to get it is great. You know, I don't care if they use ribbon or not. But if sitting in that seller's, you know, living room. You sound more educated, more informed. You know, the expert in the business as opposed to, well, this is how it always done. I saw your house. You move out, go fi- you'll figure that out on your own. Go to your cousins, go to an Airbnb, store your furniture. Oops, we didn't get that house, but I sold your house, so I got paid. That's not the goal. The goal is again, looking at that client. Where are you going to go? How are we going to make this happen? Now, we may not need this option. This option has some costs with it. Going to a bank has some costs with it, you know, using cash out of your 401K has some costs with it. We can evaluate those later. But my goal is going to help you, and it's why they called a bridge program. My goal is to help you move from this house to your next stage in real estate. If that's a rental, great. If it's an upgrade, great. If it's downsizing, great. If we're not going to be able to get this offer because X, Y, Z. Then I have the tools that might help. Again, this is not going to be a product that's going to be used by the vast majority of buyers. Now, tight inventory market makes it more likely that it's going to be used than it would in other markets, but. It is one that we need to know about and you need to know about all of those tools. Just like if you've got a client that's renovating, you need to know the difference between they could buy the house to get an equity line or they could get a 203K loan. 203K is going to be more expensive, but if that's the way they can buy the house because it only appraises for the prefinished value. And they need that to get the house, then that's something you need to know. Because some other agent's going to bring that to their investor buyer. Now, if your investor buyer has a pile of cash or a giant equity line on a $5 million house, they don't need that. Great. You know, we're not making anything off ribbon doing these deals. It's there to partner with you to facilitate the deal that might otherwise not happen.
Yeah, totally agree. It's just, this is definitely not going to be a solution for absolutely every person you work with, but it's a gr- great option. To be able to present to them if the opportunity, you know, calls for it.
Absolutely.
Right.
So Leah, with that, I appreciate it. I know there are lots of questions, guys. I know this will be new. We'll send out this video. We'll also send out some additional collateral materials so that you guys can continue to educate yourselves. Um, and and that's really the point. Um, if anything specific comes up. Um, by all means, reach out. We'll, we'll help connect you, talk to your broker. We'll help connect you to whomever the right person is as we learn about these. And then we'll also share stories to go through, where are the successes we've seen? Where are the challenges we've seen, like appraisals or valuations? How do we overcome those? Like a buyer that can bring money to closing? And how do we better understand how we use the program to help achieve our clients' goals on an ongoing basis? So. With that, um, we're over time, but that's all right. That's a good thing. We still have a lot of people on the call. Leah, I appreciate your time.
Welcome.
Appreciate everyone being in here. Um, I think I can control ending the call real fast, John. So.
No, you can't.
There's no need for. Happy birthday. I think there's something off my speaker. Very, very much. I, I. So, so with that, we'll sign off. Jeff had a question of who do they call? Just you can reach out to your ribbon rep or your broker can put you in touch with them. Um, and kind of guide through the process. Um, and again, we'll have to take it one at a time as we kind of work and learn any new system. But um, you know, I appreciate Leah taking the time and we'll continue working through that. Which will help with the other side of the listing. Of maybe a cash offer and quick sale is best for your client or maybe, you know, an institutional investor is right, or maybe a traditional sale. So we'll kind of work through those as, you know, the conversational listing agent has with their seller. Has evolved from a traditional listing. And this is just one more part of that. So.
I put my um, email too in the, in the chat. So if anybody um, wants to email, but yeah, well, I'll also send around a follow-up so you have all the information for anyone who's. So asking.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
Bye.
Thank you.